This conference will now be recorded.
Hello? Hello?
This is Jermaine.
Yes, just making sure the audio is working this time.
Yep. Jermaine, be sure to mute your microphone when you're not speaking, all right?
Okay.
So it is 4:00 PM, May 6th of 2020, and I am going to call the City Council's study session to order. I will begin by roll call to see who all is here. I'll begin with Jared Couch.
Here.
Chuck Owen.
Here.
Jermaine Cornege.
Here.
Brendan McGothan.
Here.
Glenn Allen.
How do we go?
Here.
Brenda Kinser. And Carl DeYoung. Did I hear? Carl, are you on?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Okay. I do know that Brenda, just for the record, to go into the record, Brenda Kinser did call earlier to say that she may be caught up at work in another meeting, so she may be joining us late. So to begin with, I'm going to give the, those who, the staff who's here, I'm going to give the staff who's here the opportunity to give a staff report. It's been over a month or close to a month since any of them have been able to do that. So I did see where Chief Tucker is on the line. Chief, would you like to share a report?
Absolutely. Perfect timing. I just got all this figured out. So Mayor, can you hear me okay? Good to go?
I can, yes.
Okay. So the only thing I really had to report out on was our motor vehicle accident that we had, were involved in on Thursday afternoon. So many may have already read and heard about it, but on Thursday at about 2:00, we went out looking for a subject who was suspected of drug dealing. The subject fled the area, and we started to follow him, but got a little bit hairy, decided we would discontinue trying to stop him. And probably a few minutes later, we reacquired him coming back into town. Once again, tried to stop him. He decided he wanted to flee and punched it up to about 70 or 80 miles an hour, turned onto surface streets in town, and we decided to discontinue any pursuit. Before we could, probably within a minute or two of that, he had driven the entire length of Warner Street, blowing through every stop sign on Warner Street from Wally to Township, where he collided with another vehicle. Suspect vehicle was T-boned by a northbound vehicle on Township, flipped the vehicle, flipped the suspect vehicle, and ejected a passenger who was pronounced dead at the scene. So we had State Patrol come in and do our investigation. We had Mount Vernon detectives come over. Since we were involved in the incident, we wanted to get some independent investigators in. We had them come in and do some discussion or do some interviews with our driver and our passenger. The, one of the passengers that was in the vehicle was the driver's 66-year-old grandmother, who suffered a broken vertebrae and cracked pelvis. The female that was the passenger was the driver's girlfriend. She was 26 or 27 years old, and like I said, she was declared dead on the scene. So really, just wanted to give you an update on that. We've got to brief the mayor and Doug early on on this, just to make sure they knew what was going on, and they've done all the proper notifications. We've talked to Nikki on this a little bit. She's going to be looking at this a little bit more from that end of it. And that's kind of all I've got on that. And nothing else to report unless anybody has any questions for me.
Okay. Are there any questions for the chief?
Oh.
All right, hearing none.
Sorry, this is Jermaine Cornege. Sorry about that. I was wondering, there's three passengers total, right? Three people total in the car?
Yes, there were three people total.
Okay, okay. Thanks.
You bet.
Okay, any other questions before I move on? All right. Thank you. Thank you, chief. Now Chief Klinger?
Good afternoon. It's been a while since we've had a chance to talk to the council. It's been a rather busy six weeks. Initially into this, we were having some problems with our PPE, that's our personal protection equipment. Six weeks into it, we've got that well ironed out now, and we've got adequate equipment. And we're still seeing kind of our called numbers come back up. At the initial onset of this, we weren't getting as many medical calls or aid type, or aid calls. And I, we don't know what the reasoning was, but there, those numbers are starting to increase again. I don't know if people are becoming comfortable now going back to a hospital, whereas before they didn't want to go out to a hospital. But those numbers are starting to increase. We did have a, weeks ago, out on 4th Reed Street, I don't know if anybody saw that or heard about that, that was a piece of property there. I believe it was the 200 block of North Reed. It was a fire in between two walls, a void space in the house, which was fairly easily extinguished. Either us nor the insurance investigator could actually pinpoint the cause. We were able to pinpoint the origin, but not the cause of that. But other than that, we've just been, like I said, trying to get back to normal as far as call load. But we have seen quite a few of the COVID-type patients that we've transported in, but nothing of any major excitement for us. Nobody's been exposed at this point. So far, everybody here has been healthy. Is there any questions from the council? Sounds good.
Okay. All right. Thank you, chief. I will move on to John Coleman.
Hello. Can you turn my camera on for this? Thanks for letting us talk today. Wanted to mention a few things going on. Back in, gosh, I want to say it was January, the planning committee of the council had got together and talked about having one read for preliminary and final plat approvals. And then the chair gave a brief, a brief analysis of what the committee's decision was at the council meeting that day, but there was no further action on it. So I'd like to bring that back to the council at the next council meeting, so to see if the council wants to do anything about making one read for preliminary and final plats. We just found out today from Skagit County that the natural hazard mitigation plan that the, all of the jurisdictions within the county were working on most of this fall and spring, we completed several months ago and sent it off to FEMA for their consideration. So FEMA has to approve it before the jurisdictions can approve it. So FEMA has approved the Skagit County Natural Hazard Mitigation Plan. So now we're at the step where each jurisdiction can pass a resolution stating that, yes, they accept the natural hazard mitigation plan. That's not something that we're going to talk about today, but that's something that I'll be bringing to the council for your approval of a resolution. That's a project that mostly Catherine, our assistant planner, has been working on for most of her time with us, and of course, you know, full planning staff help on that. And then moving on, over the past couple of weeks, I've had about three, maybe four people cull with interest in using the accessory dwelling unit regulations. Now, it just so happens that every one of them are not capable of using it. Now, one person wasn't even in city of Cedar or Woolley city limits, so they would, of course, be ineligible. And other people were looking at it as, you know, investment properties. So we haven't, I haven't heard directly from anybody, but there is, the word is out, and people are hearing that it's available. And so we may be hearing from people in not-too-distant future about more accessory dwelling unit questions. Of course, the council approved accessory dwelling units. It doesn't go into effect until June or July, and the council still needs to talk about fees and some, just some fee things to tidy everything up, and then we can start accepting ADU applications in July, I believe. But again, nothing to act on now, just thought it'd give the council an update on that. And lots else going on, but a lot of it's just details that won't bore the council with. That's all I have. Unless anybody has any questions.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions for John?
I don't, this is Bill, Bill Chambers. No questions, John, but don't forget to mute your microphone when you're done.
Madam Mayor, I have a question for John. This is Councilmember DeYoung. Yeah, this is Councilmember DeYoung. John, I have a mobile vendor that gave me a call, and they were asking about the parking on Township there by truck vault, just a little to the south of there. And I asked them to give you a call, and I was wondering if you had a determination on that little cutout of parking. I would presume it's a city's.
So if my memory serves that, so it's actually, you're talking about the on-street parking, angled parking there?
Correct.
So Mark might need to help me on this one. That is, I think it's a parking easement on private land, so it's more or less city parking. But technically, it might be an easement on private land. If it were right-of-way, then the mobile vendor, I believe, would not be able to use that location. That's the question for, for the finance department that, I'm not sure who exactly administers the mobile.
Right. So to clarify, the mobile vendor is on private property on the other, on the east side of the sidewalk there, and they are directly across from that cutout diagonal parking. And so, you know, they had questions about ownership of that parking.
This is Mark.
Well.
I can, the parking itself, I believe, is a city. And it may partially be an easement, but it's definitely partially in the city there as well.
All right. Great. Thank you. Question answered. Thank you very much.
Okay. Are there any other questions from the council? If not, thank you, John, and we will move on to, I don't know if Jill Scott is on. I don't know if I saw her on. Jill, are you on?
I am on. Good afternoon.
Oh, wonderful. Good afternoon.
Thank you. I don't have much to report, other than we're just trying to continue with limited staff and staggering schedules and just continuing to learn the ropes.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Jill at this time from the council? Okay, then we will move on to Bill Chambers. Hi, Bill.
Well, well, we're getting started with phase one of the council AV upgrade. Glenn's been in contact with Avidex, and I believe someone was going to come out this week and do a more detailed inspection for the plan. Getting all ramped up for public surplus items after pausing for a while on that, and looking forward to getting back to cooler temperatures. It's about 105 down here. That's about it.
I don't know. That sounds pretty, that sounds pretty good to me. All right. Thank you, Bill. Are there any questions for Bill at this time from the council?
Madam Mayor, this is Councilmember DeYoung.
Council, yes?
Yep. I just wanted to thank Bill for taking, taking the time to proctor me through the go-to-meeting process here and to get ahead of the technology issues I was having on our April 22nd meeting. So glad Bill was available to help out. Thank you, Bill.
You're welcome. And for the rest of you, I'll be sure to start the meetings about a half an hour ahead of time in case you need to use a new device and connect and just test it out.
Okay. And for the record, Councilman DeYoung did ask that we move to have his absence excused for the April 22nd council meeting due to technical difficulty. So we've placed that into the record for you, Councilman DeYoung, and thank you for making us aware of that.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Mr. Mark Frybacher.
Thank you, Mayor. Most of these things you'll see on the agenda for the meeting on the 13th. We did go to advertisement for the SR20 lane widening project on the 5th. That bids will close on that on the 19th, and hopefully we'll have a good bid to bring to you for award on May 27th. Related to that project, we have on the agenda for the 13th, a, an agreement with Skagit County. It's the inter-local agreement that we've been kind of bouncing back and forth between the county's attorney and our office here for quite some time. That's been finalized, and that confirms their contribution of $285,000 towards the project. Also on the agenda are, is an agreement from Wash Dot Rails that is for the $850,000 that was granted from the legislature. It was made, decided at the Transportation Department to run that through the Rails program. Haven't personally worked with them before, so it took a little bit to get all of the wrinkles ironed out on that, but we do have that agreement ready. And I'm also working on an agreement with BNSF to actually spend the money and build the structure for the undercrossing. Think that's going okay. It's being done a little unusually in that we're using Ross Widener as a middleman and negotiating that. This particular project is all about relationships, and Ross has been key in this whole thing. If we'd be doing this through the normal BNSF process, that rail crossing would probably have cost us a couple of million dollars rather than the 850 they're estimating. So it's been really handy having him in both of our corners on this. The other thing that's going on, David and Wally are working now on the Jamison overlay project. We plan to have that for ad, hopefully about May 20th. We're looking to have that one bid and ready to award at the June 10th council meeting, and that'll get our other road project underway. Nathan's crew has been busy prepping streets. They actually were involved in the auto accident on Township because they were over there working in that vicinity, and the police department called them in for traffic control, and they were able to assist with that. But, so they're ready for the county chip seal projects. Doug signed the, the agreement with Skagit County this, this morning to pay for that, and we hopefully will see all that work done here somewhere around the first, second week in July. Mayor, would you like me to wait until another part of the meeting for the TIF discussion?
You know, I purposely put you at the bottom of the list here, just in case you wanted to bring that up and share that, make the council aware of it.
Okay, so.
Is that something, yeah?
Yes, I can do that now. There were late materials presented. I apologize for that. I probably knew but forgot that this was the last work session until about September. I was concerned, and I expressed that both to Doug and to the mayor, that this, we had completed our transportation impact fee update that I've talked about a number of times in the past few months, and I didn't want that to get too cold before we actually brought it forward for consideration by the council. So this is no action required today. Just wanted to bring this forward before you, and you can read it at your leisure. And if you have any questions for me, I can take those, you know, at the next council meeting or whatever. Essentially, we're looking at about a 16% increase in the transportation impact fees. You'll recall from the last time we did this, at least those that were on the council, that we have two zones, and now, we used to have 13, but we have the downtown zone and then all the other city with a base transportation impact fee rate for, that is equivalent to a single residential unit, which would be roughly two to four trips a day, of $1,341, $1,341 now, and then for the rest of the city, it's $2,407. The proposed increase is on the second page of the memo. It goes to $1,562 for downtown and $2,809 for the other parts of town. Again, it's about a 16%, a little less than 17% increase that's proposed. The way this is codified in the municipal code 1560-050 and 060, we are staff supposed to update these grades, update these impact fee numbers by the FHWA area inflation factor yearly. We've chosen not to do that since 2016 because we've been working on the Jones John Liner Trail Corridor project. We knew that some of the numbers would change quite a bit, and so we elected to just hold that, and when we had that study in place, update it, such as we've done now with this memorandum to incorporate the better engineers' estimates for the projects that make up the corridor study. We're also cleaning it up for the projects we've completed, and we know the actual local cost. We've factored that in, and we've also removed one project that appears to be more of a developer-driven project rather than one that we would, we would attempt to fund with our own city funds. So that, it's still in the project list, but it's not used in the calculations, which lowers the impact fees somewhat as a result. So that's basically the long and short of it. There is a comparison on page seven of the actual transportation impact fee memo, comparing us with the surrounding agencies, and I talk about a few of those on the second page of my memo, but we're still in the ballpark of Burlington and, and Anacortes, very close to both of those. Yeah, we are still significantly under Mount Vernon's and well below the state average, which is in the 4,000s. There is, at the very last page, or second-to-last page of the TSI memorandum, a more comprehensive comparison for many other cities in the western part of the state, and we're probably in the bottom quarter, looking at it statewide. So we had had some thoughts about not bringing this forward too soon because of all the unknowns with COVID-19, but again, I don't want to let this get cold because, first of all, it is important that we keep up with having defensible impact fee rates available and coming in from developments that are increasing the traffic volume in the city. And it's very important because these provide the primary funding to match the funds that we will need to build, the projects that are listed in our, our comprehensive plan. So I do want to move forward with this in the not-too-distant future, but we'll need to wait, of course, until we have the ability to have a regular public meeting and all the rest of that. So I'm thinking somewhere maybe in July, August, something like that. And if you have any questions about this that you'd like to ask now, I know you haven't seen much of it yet, but, or we can take them later, as I mentioned. Thank you.
All right. So is there anyone who has current questions for Mark? What I would like to encourage you to do is you read through the information. I know Mark would be open to you emailing your questions or any concerns you may have, and I know he'll get back with you on that. And then that way, Mark will also bring that to the council as well. So we will all hear what the questions or concerns were that have been shared. Thank you, Mark, for taking the time to do that.
Thank you, Mayor.
I, I have an apology. So our new attorney, Nikki Thompson, I overlooked you, Nikki. I apologize. Is there anything that you would like to report to the council at this time?
Thank you, Mayor. Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council members. I don't really have anything to add, other than I'm still getting up to speed and working with everyone on the projects that they've brought to me. I'm certainly enjoying myself. This is a fabulous team, and I'm excited to be a part of it. Beyond that, I don't have anything to add.
All right. Thank you. And welcome again to the team.
Thank you, Mayor.
So that, that ends our staff reports. I am going to move right into Special House Bill 1406, the Affordable House Sales Tax. I don't know how many of you remember this, and of course, Brendan, I don't think you were on council yet, nor were you, Glenn, when we passed Resolution 103419, which is required to do in order to collect the funds for, that come out for 1406. I'm going to turn this over to Doug, and Doug, I don't know if you want to go into detail as to what we're looking at here. No decisions will be made today. This is just for conversation and clarification. We do need to put together an ordinance, and once we have all the information, we can move forward with that ordinance. So, Mr. Merriman? Are you with us, Doug? Well, I don't hear Doug. Bill, is he with us, or?
Looks like his screen has frozen.
Yeah, sure does.
I see him muted. He's showing up on the list here, but I'm not seeing him. Can't hear him.
Doug, come back. Thank you, Lynn. I love your humor. So I'm going to, I already sent this out to the council, so just kind of reiterate what it is that we're looking at. With Resolution 103419 of the Special House Bill 1406, we have three options that we can consider. And as I said, no decisions need to be made today. However, we do need to decide either by the 13th or even by the end of the month. However, we do need to decide either by the 13th or even by the end of the month, what we would like to do. The first is the option to adopt.
I don't know if that happened there.
Hello? We're having trouble hearing you, Doug.
So, um. Okay. So I'll start right back where I was. There. Thanks, G.
So Doug, we're still having trouble understanding you. You're breaking up, coming in and out. Well, I'll just, I'll just kind of continue on here. So we need to adopt an ordinance to levy the revenue and administer as a city program. Or we could adopt levy the revenue and partner with the county to administer the funding. Or we have the option to not adopt at all and the revenue will default to the county itself. I don't know if any of you have had a chance to kind of look over the information in the packet that Doug sent out. But if you have, if there's any comments or questions at this time, that would be great.
Hi, Mayor Julia.
Yes, Glenn.
Okay, Councilman Allen, just a question. If I read it right, Cedar Woolley projected before this downturn COVID at what 14,000 a year, like 1,200 a month?
Correct. That's correct.
Okay, my own thoughts were, you know, I don't know what our administrative costs would be. I was sure to defer money to county where it could cool with us. So that's my thought.
Okay. All right.
Mayor Julia.
And Glenn, can I ask why you would prefer to defer it to the county? I'm just wondering why you're taking that.
This is me, Councilman Allen. Yeah, I don't think $1,200 a month would do any very many citizens in Cedar Woolley very much where if we pool our resources with the county, which would have their resources, maybe other smaller cities and towns. I think they could probably be better equipped to divert the funds, I think. You know, I don't think collecting the tax, but for $1,200 a month, I mean, I don't know how it would work. But how much staff time would we have to put in for people coming in? Assist, you know? That's, that's my thought.
All right. Thank you. So I have, I have Doug here and I'm going to put him on. So he has, I think, more information to share. All right. So hold the questions for now. Thank you.
Hi, so I'm back on this camera. My apologies, I kept getting booted out off my phone. So hopefully those will work a little better. And thanks to the mayor for kind of introducing this in. Just a couple of points to make real quick. It sounds like we've talked about our three options already. And just real quick, the first one is we can adopt an ordinance and do this ourselves. Or we can adopt and levy it and we can partner with the county. Or three, if you don't do anything at all. So that the question Glenn that you had, if we don't do it, the money goes back to the state. So the, the local community actually loses that money. There was some wording in the bill that said counties would then pick it up if we don't take it. But they actually had a mistake in the bill that they're trying to correct. So just keep in mind that if the city doesn't take it, it will go back to Olympia and the Skagit County area will lose out on that.
So this is new information.
Yeah. And so it would be better, even if we didn't want to manage it ourselves, to go ahead and pass it and to make an agreement with the county and give it to them to manage.
Okay, this is Councilman Allen again. No, that is exactly what I had in mind. I don't mind accepting it. I just think that the county, if we give it to them basically to spend for us. I mean, you know, we can adopt it and then have them be the administrators of the, the funds.
Right. So that would take us.
We would accept it, but we would have the county administer it is what my proposal or where my thoughts are.
Okay.
Does that make sense? I don't want to, I don't want to refuse it. I just don't think that we could efficiently, as efficiently as a county disperse it. Okay?
Okay, yeah. So, but the one thing that the county is. So bear in, bear in mind, Glenn, and actually everyone, that we don't have to spend it right away. This is actually funding that we can collect over the years. And if we decide three years, four years, five years from now, that we do want to build a affordable housing unit of some kind or do some sort of a development for affordable housing, we can use that fund to help get it started. So just keep that in mind. Are there any other questions or comments from the council regarding this?
This is Councilman Austin. For the county, if we did the option number two, would we have a representative from the city on that board? And who would that be?
Yeah, we could. We could put that in the terms of the interlocal agreement. If, if the city decided that that's what they wanted to do, the council decided that's what they wanted to do. Good question.
Okay.
Anyone else? Okay, so again, be thinking about this and we will be bringing this back probably next Wednesday and making a decision. We do have to have a decision, I do believe, before July 28th, that maybe we have a few months here. But it'd be nice to kind of get this taken care of, especially since we passed the resolution back in November. So moving forward with this would be great. All right. So if there is no more on that, I'm going to give the council one last chance, make comment or ask question. Okay, if there's no more on 1406, I am going to move into the revenue impacts. It's our budget. This is I'm going to turn this over to Doug and this is something that I think you're going to be impressed with. Doug has been working really hard with this. I gave him a mandate and the mandate was we don't want to lay anybody off. So how do you make this happen? And Doug's been working really hard on this. So I'm going to turn this over to Doug and he's going to tell you kind of what he's looking at and what we talked about this morning regarding the budget.
Thank you, Mayor. Hopefully everybody got a chance to get the email we sent out or to have picked up the information, the graphs I sent out today. They are attached as late materials if you need to find those. But as with all graphs, there's a lot of detail and everything on these. But really what it comes down to is the assumptions that I'm using are starting in the month of May, we're going to see our revenues start feeling the impact of the COVID-19 virus. Primarily, when you drive down the street here, you can see the, the lack of cars and everything. We're going to be feeling that a month or two later. It takes a couple of months for a sales tax from the time somebody buys something to get through Olympia and then back to the city. So May is the month that we're looking at for our revenues to start showing that impact. So the way I'm modeling it or trying to at least do the analysis is to project out about eight months and to anticipate what we think those revenues might do. It's really a tough one to go by because we don't have anything other than really throwing a dart and just trying to go by a gut feel of what we see. But the information I sent you, it's actually a model where I can put in different numbers each month and we can track it and at least see where those trends are going. Right now, I'm anticipating we're going to probably have about a 30% reduction in sales tax for the year. That's actually, the number is a little bit higher, but we had a four month head start going January through April. But going from May through December, we're going to see probably a pretty good drop in that sales tax. Overall, citywide, I'm looking at about a 17% decrease in revenues. And I've got that all laid out on that spreadsheet. So 17%, that means about a million and a half dollars citywide. So that's pretty substantial for us. When I look at all our different funds, by those, I mean, we have the general fund. We have parks, we have streets and arterials. Each of those gets a share of sales tax or property tax or other sources of income. Each of those sources of income will be impacted a little differently. But what I've been able to do is divide up those impacts so I can meet with the department heads and look at each of those funds. And we can put a plan of action in place on how we're going to respond to that. The worst of the funds, of course, is the general fund. And the net loss we're looking at is about $835,000. So that's pretty significant for that fund. So the approach we're looking at, one is what are the mandates we have? And the mayor did discuss about staffing and the priorities there. So looking at each department, we have met and gone through just some basic brushstrokes, looking at things like, for example, training. A lot of times staff travels to training. Right now, there's nowhere to go. There's no training because everything's closed. So we're doing webinars and different things like that. So we're able to cut down on a lot of those costs because we're finding different ways to do things. We're going through each department and looking at other items like professional services. Are there things we're contracting out that we can actually do in-house? There are several other things like that. It'll still take a little bit more work. I've met with the department heads. I've gone back through with my own pencil and I need to go back through and meet with the department heads again, just to confirm everything up. We're looking at right now being very close to covering the drop for this year by doing just cuts and areas of our budget and deferring some different things at least until the end of the year. One of the things to enable us to do that, though, is something city council has to decide on. And city council has a strategic reserve, its fund 114. I wouldn't suggest taking money out of it, but each year we put money into it. And one thing that would be helpful is city council would consider using that money to help balance the general fund this year. That would leave us about $400,000 in your strategic reserve fund. But at least we'd be able to use this year's income to help balance this revenue reduction that we're seeing. So that comes to about $150,000. So that would be very helpful in balancing that. Looking forward after this year, we just don't know. We're going to have to see how long and protracted this downturn is. It looks like we're looking at opening things up again. That'll make the opening available. We still have to see if people are comfortable going out and spending. So they may not go hand in hand like that. But if things still stay slow and this is protracted to the end of the year, we may have to meet again in December and January and talk about other things we may have to do to keep the balanced budget going forward. So there's a lot of information. I wish we had an in-person work session so I can put this all up on the screen and have it make a little more sense. But just to make sure you're in the loop, we're looking at a million and a half dollars probably is our downfall, our downturn. And the general fund is probably about $830,000. And that's our challenge that we're working on today. As we develop the ways we're going to respond to that, we'll go ahead and bring that forward to you. And I see a sharing screen coming up. I don't know if Bill is going to try to throw my graph up there. Let's see what he's got here. But anyway, that is the main part I just wanted to give to you today. And I can entertain any questions you might have.
I guess, I guess I have a question. This is Truane Cognigay. So are most of our businesses, do you think that May 18th being within phase two of this, do you think most of our businesses will be returning? I mean, from what you guys, this is just, I guess, an educated guess. But I did see at least one business kind of packing up. But I was just curious if you know how many, if most of our business will be returning.
You know, it's a really good question and I don't have a really strong answer. I sincerely hope that most of it can come back. But I do know having a small business in my family, things can run on a pretty tight string sometimes, especially when you get into getting out of January and February and that time of year. There may be some that have some struggles on coming back on that. But at this time, we can't really quantify what that mix might be.
Yeah. Okay.
All right, yeah, that is a really good question. Councilman Cognigay, and I actually heard from several of the businesses downtown and I know they really are struggling. So I am I'm just, I'm just going to say it. I was very disappointed that things weren't open, that the governor didn't open things back up come May 4th. I think we are ready to get going. I know some of the businesses, businesses downtown have come up with, I thought, very cohesive plans as to how to allow customers in and out. So for me, it was devastating when I heard he wanted to keep things going till the end of the month. He does have the phases, phase one, two, three, and four. I did send that out to all of you. And hopefully those will go according to plan. It's my understanding he's going to look at them every three weeks. So maybe in three weeks, things will be open. But we do need to get back to work and we need our businesses to get back to work. And I'm hoping that that is soon. Okay. With that, if there are no other questions, I am going to open this up for the council and give them an opportunity to share anything if they have anything for the good of the order. And I'll just call you by name here. So I'll begin with Councilman Jared Couch. Do you have anything for the good of the order? Okay, Councilman Chuck Owen.
This is Madam Mayor. I have one question for Chief Tucker. My, my concealed carry permit is just about to run out and I need to get that renewed. How can I go about that?
You're going to be fine with that. I talked to Tamra about that because we have a driver's license that were extended. And we're, we're going to, I would just consider it extended until we can get this adequately done. If we're only looking at starting to get a partial opening in the next week or two, we're going to move those people up that come in and get that done. So if you, if you're going to be just a short timeout of compliance, I think you're going to be fine. I wouldn't worry about it.
Okay, I'm, I'm good until the end of this month, so.
Yeah, you should be fine then. And if for some reason we find out different, you know people, so we can, we can make something happen.
Okay, thank you.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't hang out with Glenn Allen or I wouldn't go out and cause any problems. You should be okay.
All right, thank you.
All right, thank you. Councilman Cognigay.
Hi, Mayor. I didn't know, maybe on our website, you could put the phone. I didn't know, maybe on our website you could put the form up. There's a form from the governor's office. I actually filled it out to be seen as an essential business because at this point it really is for pet grooming. They did deny it. They're of course able to do that, but there is a form that a lot of people don't know about. Also Bobby from Cascade Fabrics, she did it and they overturned hers because, you know, people use fabric to make masks right now. So maybe that will be a forum, I'm not sure if it's on our website, but it might be a good idea to put on there because a lot of the big business, like Petco is able to be opening groom. I don't really know how they're getting away with doing that when smaller ones can't. But there is that forum to be seen as an essential business. It might help some of our local businesses right now.
That is excellent. I do not, but is it something that maybe that you could send to Bill and Bill could get it up on our website?
For sure. Okay, I'll do that.
Thank you. That's great. Thank you. Good to know.
Thank you.
Councilman McGoffin? Yeah, thank you. Councilman McGoffin?
Hi, I just had one question about the library. I know that construction has stopped on it. What's our status on payments now and when it slides, you know, a month or two in the future, will we continue the payments? I'd just like to hear kind of a status on what their schedule is and the payments on that.
So if I understood you correctly, you were breaking up as you were asking the question, but are you wanting an update or a status on the library? Is that what you're asking?
Yes, primarily on the financial part of it. So if the construction has stopped now, are we still making payments or are we going to extend the amount of months that we make payments until it's completed?
Well, I'm going to put Doug on for that. That's okay, Doug. Because he is doing the financial piece of that, so to get it accurate, I'm going to put him on for you, all right?
Okay, well, first, the good news is the library project is back up and running as of this week. So that was good to get that part going forward. During this time, of course, there hasn't been work being done, so we haven't had to make very large construction payments going out. We still do have to pay interest on the loan that we've drawn so far. That doesn't stop accruing or anything like that. The one thing from a financial perspective, we had to really be aware of and had to get some legal counsel on, from our bond attorneys, is we had a date in December of this year that we had to fully draw our loan down. And when we first started, that was a good date. It was going to be a couple of months after construction was done. But I was concerned that if construction were to go past that date, what issues do we run into? Because our ordinance said we would be done drawing at that time. We were able to get an answer back. All we need to do is when we get close to that date, we just draw the remainder of the bond. And they said, go ahead and reinvest that at an interest rate that's close to your bond rate and do that. Otherwise, we would have to go back and redo the whole bond ordinance and the issue ordinance and everything there. So I think it's going to work out okay. I would anticipate some costs due to the closure because we still have project management fees that accrue during that time. So there'll probably be a change order for security of the building and some different things like that, but it shouldn't be too material to the project.
Okay, thank you.
You bet.
All right, thank you. That was a good question. Councilman Allen?
This is for Chief Tucker. Even though he gave me crud or gave Chuck crud about hanging around with me. Anyway, you guys are doing great police work. You're very humble. Can you tell us about the bust you made in your parking lot a few days ago?
Well, that one was kind of, that one was our second 9:30 knucklehead on KISM. And Lieutenant McElwraith and Sergeant Eaton were standing at the back door just talking in the parking lot and our suspect just drove down the back alley. They stopped him and said, you know, this is a one-way alley here and it's restricted. Did you see the sign? Well, oddly enough, the guy had been drinking and when he started to get out of the vehicle, he had a great big machete on his, in his seat and things started getting weird from there. They arrested him and then started talking to the girl. She was being sketchy and she handed them a bag of drugs that she had as she was hiding the bigger bag of heroin in her car. So they went from kind of a poor decision to a series of poor decisions. And yeah, that was kind of it. It was just like, really? You guys couldn't have gone down any other alley in town? You had to just pick this one? But I do believe they were the kind of people that they consistently make poor decisions. So we processed them and then cut them loose and we'll file charges on them with the prosecutor's office.
Great police work.
Appreciate it. I had a good lieutenant, good sergeant.
And Councilman DeYoung?
Hi. Chief Tucker, I just wanted to say thank you for your work in my neighborhood on that rollover accident and I'm just so pleased that no one was hurt with the city and the law enforcement and our EMTs and fire and also public works. Thanks for keeping the neighborhood safe there, too. And also, I just wanted to commend the neighbors and the community for jumping in and helping with that rollover and doing the best they could to provide life-saving techniques to folks. And it was a testament to what Cedar Valley is about and just pitching in and trying to help folks out. So wanted to commend those folks for doing that. Also, down at Riverfront Park, we've seen ceasing of the activities with the Skagit Fisheries Enhancement Group with their plantings, et cetera, due to the COVID. Additionally, we have, as a representative from the city to the Skagit Watershed Council, those meetings have been canceled as well. And, but we're still talking about our water sustainability and what we can do to help in improve our neck of the woods on the river for the community. Additionally, was, been on conference calls with COVID for elected officials and community members, from Rick Larson to others, Suzanne, et cetera. Also wanted to give out a large commendation to Helping Hands Food Bank for serving the community as they have, stepping up and also to the National Guard, Guardsmen and Air Guard folks that live in our community that are helping out at the Helping Hands Food Bank. And the person in charge there is from Alger and also having Senator Hobbs, Lieutenant Colonel Hobbs up here to really see what our community has done to pull together in order to help folks out. Because we see that from the Department of Labor, we could have up to 22% unemployment rate here in the next report, so one in five people. And the food bank, they're seeing what used to happen in a week is happening in a day and just how they're able to help out families. So I wanted to let you know that that service is going on. And thank you, Mayor Johnson, for being out there on the first day of the COVID protocols of serving folks as they did to drive up. See, we also had a talk about the federal bill that's coming through or that's being pushed through, the next 500 million billion, excuse me, that we're hoping to look forward to helping out municipalities to help fund the police, help fund the fire department, help fund water quality folks, help fund our public works folks. So been making some phone calls and faxes to our folks in DC to encourage them to help support local municipalities like ourselves. And also just wanted to say Happy Mother's Day and enjoy the 80-degree weather.
Okay, thank you. And Jared, Councilman Couch, I received your message. Go ahead.
I just had one quick question, Mayor. And do we have a plan at the city as far as any services that were not able to continue our plan for phasing those back ended? Are we meeting all of our needs and obligations to the construction industry since they are restarted?
Yeah, we have been fulfilling our end of it. We've been trying to keep communication open, talking with them, trying to help them get up and going. I actually was in communication with a couple of the different construction companies, BYK and whatnots, prior to them being able to open, encouraging them to continue on with the lobbying that they were doing down in Olympia. So there has been that that has been going on. Also permitting, we have been keeping the permitting going. Am I missing something or have I covered your question? Okay, all right, good. All right, well, thank you, everyone. I know that these are a little different, these meetings are a little different, but I really want to thank you, Bill, for making it happen. Otherwise, we wouldn't be able to get together. So thank you very much. Enjoy the 100-degree plus weather down there. And everybody, stay safe. Remember to wash your hands and we will be back together next Wednesday. Have a good night. Meeting adjourned.